Additionally. All right.
I can see it on the A and space that we're good now.
All right, good. Additionally, every time you speak, you must state your name and title for the record. And also, please be careful not to speak over each other as we're all trying to listen and understand what's being expressed. And also, we want to make sure that we have a clear recording for the meeting. For this reason, when it becomes time for the commission members to comment and ask questions about a particular agenda item before the action is taken and then to vote on that item, our planner, Maury Jussey, will then call for a vote as needed. Also, the regular meeting is being recorded and the recording will be posted on the town's website. And I'm going to ask Maury to take the attendance for the commission here. Thank you. Mayan Joycey?
Here.
Ginnisay Fun?
Yeah.
Brendan Rogan?
Here.
Sandra Capola?
Here.
Scott Hamel?
Absent.
Chairman Bealie?
Here.
Peter Zerboza? Alternate?
Absolute.
Absolute.
Yeah, that wasn't your that long, excuse me.
Andrew Lagnami?
Absolute.
Steve Biella Jr.?
Here.
And John Michael O'Brien?
Absolute.
We have four. Okay, great. We need to see. Um, as Steve Biella, as an alternate, will be seated for, I can't remember, John Michael. Okay, great. The review of the minutes for the meeting of July 7th, 2022, it was a regular meeting. Did everyone have a chance to look at those minutes? And if so, do we have any corrections or motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Rogan and Mr. Zigmont has a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great, thanks. Scheduling public hearings, we have a special permit site plan application for Little House Living LLC for nineteen newly constructed residential units, three single-family style buildings, and eight duplex-style buildings. The suggested date for this is August 18th.
My motion to schedule for August 18th.
Okay, Mr. Zigmont has a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Rogan for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, so moved. Item B, proposed amendment to zoning regulations for Joseph F. Casio, Section 6H3, special permit uses regarding indoor sports complex uses in the BT2 zone. The suggested date is the first of September. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve, uh, to September 1st.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zigmont. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Rogan. Guys are on a roll. All those in, uh, further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Good, all right, moving on. Some new business. We have a fill permit application of the Southington Tractor Community YMCA Incorporated to fill Hauser Minus ninety thousand cubic yards, Hauser Minus eight point seven acres at lot five, block fifteen on Southington Road. I can't, okay?
Yeah.
For the applicant.
For the applicant, Bobe, Ichikol, sons of Plainsville, representing the Southern Tractor Community YMCA. Uh, and I apologize for the board, the heat kind of played with it, so I think what I'll do is I'll just pick it up and show it.
That's good.
Uh, can anybody see that here?
Yeah, you know, I was wondering, can we kind of, can we take, can we get it to the top?
We can get it to the top.
I don't know. With those clips? And Maury, do you have something to share for the commission?
I have.
Okay, good. All right. All right, thank you. That's much better. Wow.
Uh, and again, I apologize for the, uh, the heat.
Not a problem, all right, we understand.
All right, for one minute, can you tell me which plan you thought that was?
This is C1.
C1, oh, that's one, the site building plan?
Yep. Yep. This piece of property is located on the south side of Southington Road. Now it's owned by Tony McCauchee. His house is located way for the south on top of the hill. This is basically across the street from the EEP at Timberland. This is the former location of the gravel pit that Tom Myers operated back in the eighties, nineties, two thousands, two thousand ten.
Forever.
Forever. He had a house up in here, there was a burn up in this location. He used this area as the, uh, as his gravel pit. Our intent is to basically take the film, I'll explain where the film's coming from in a second, but take the film from the site that the, uh, that the YMCA is using and basically place that back within the original gravel pit area to kind of replicate what the site originally looked like. Those of you who have seen that site know that there's not much growing in that area because they, they question how swell. But then there is, we hope we get the greenness and feathering out material. It's very natural. So let me kind of explain what's going on here. Uh, the Southern East Tractor Community YMCA operates Camp Sloper in the southern section of corner of East and Kenton Avenue, uh, which is just off the corner of four through seventy-two, uh, three seventy-four turns, uh, and she caves back into Santa Tana, Southington. Uh, within the center of that camp is Sloper Pond, which is about a seven or eight acre pond that's located in the center. It's used for recreational swimming and boating. Uh, they own that pond, uh, since it was bequeathed from the Sloper family. And over the last hundred years or so, nothing has happened maintenance on that pond. There's been no clearing, no dredging, it's operated as a natural spring and probed fed pine. Very clean, very natural. Uh, basically, the upper portions of Southington drain in, except for a small portion, three seventy-four. It's all naturally wooded and very lack of development on the upstream side. Uh, what the wine sounds over the past few years, though, is that some shallow portion of the lake have been getting, or shallow and shallow due to sediment build-up from the crocs and streams upstream, they've been naturally filling the pond. And it started about, uh, two thousand and ten was the development plan, they would help them dredge that pond out. I mentioned in my narrative, we've been working on this for about twelve years. Unfortunately, I've taken over the last two years after they've tried twice to, uh, to develop plans. One for mechanical dredging where they dropped the pond entirely, trucked out the material. Uh, they've tried that twice with no success. They've been regulatory issues, the, the, the way he has gotten some funding from the state, a grant to help do the work. But as the years go on, to grab one becomes less and less, and not a work they can do, reduces and reduces. Then COVID hit, so, uh, we re-bid this project, uh, within the last year as a hydraulic dredging type of use. What we ended up with is kind of a modification where I'm taking water out of the pond, but we're doing mechanical dredging out of the pond with a system where they lift the, uh, the sediment out, they put it on a barge, they take it to the shore, they take it from the barge, they put it into a deep watering area, the sediment de-waters itself, and then they take it out of the watering area, they truck it, they bring it around, and discharge it out. Uh, the round trip that we're looking for is about two point four miles from Sloper to our site. Uh, basically, except for a small portion of East Road, sorry, except for a small portion of East Road, uh, the majority of that long lane just through three seventy-two and, uh, in Southington and then in Kenton.
Three sixty-four.
Three sixty-four, I'm sorry. Uh, it's not the brown turnpike, but it is a state highway. It is fairly well-marked. Uh, the lanes are well-established, and I think it can support the truck traffic. Uh, we are looking to come into an existing curb cut on our site, located just between the barn and the existing house. Uh, we don't feel we need an additional permit for the curb cut, but we do realize that the state needed more additional signage to stop for the, not truck traffic that was supposed to get the site. They use existing curb cuts or use existing sightlines. I've looked at sightline from both the hump here on the side to road and the bend as it goes around by the cemetery, and it maximizes in both directions the sightlines that we can obtain. Uh, we have potentially looked at shorting this over, but then you get, you have sightline issues here, so that's probably the best place. We would use existing pavement by the barn, and then as the barn comes through, there's a gravel driveway that runs through the back. We will put our, or our, so, uh, tracky pad in that path so that the trucks will drop their mud and debris off, and they'll have an exist, assisting rock of about three hundred feet. So we're not tracking mud and debris into the state road and having to clean, and we'll keep it on site. Again, the green plan that we're showing, uh, we're hoping to get ninety thousand yards. How do we come up with ninety thousand yards? The plan that we've got approved by Southington and we bid out is a hundred twenty-nine thousand five hundred yards. But we're assuming there's going to be some compaction of material that we take out due to water. It's just the fact that the sediment is very light, very fluffy or less dense. So we think we're going to compact it down. We're figuring that thirty percent compaction of the amount of material. When we're talking to pure hydraulic dredgers, they were taught to be something in the range of fifty thousand yards. But the, the company we've contracted with Yield Industries, Torrenton Fields, that thirty percent is a more representative number. Uh, and we are contracted per yard to take material out. Depending on how much fun the club has, they may not reach the hundred twenty-five thousand yards. They may reach a smaller amount, and that will in fact reduce the amount of material that we bring into the sites instead of ninety. But we feel compelled to request ninety thousand yards, just in case we do reach that. And we understand there are fees associated with that, but we're willing to, uh, deal with that. The material is clean, and we will have it tested. So back in two thousand and eleven, when this project started, we had a report done by Test America where they took samples of the sediment, and they ran, uh, chemical tests, and I don't like to report on it. I did forward that to, uh, to Mike Arroyo so he could look at that. I forwarded that, I think this morning, if I'm not mistaken, so I'm sure he hasn't had a chance to look at it. But basically, the material is clean. Again, it is used by the wine for recreational purposes. They have extensive testing of the waters, uh, because they use it for the recreational purposes. So I have no concerns of it happening, of damage issues in the water. Again, the upstream area is very natural, very little pollution comes into this lake, it's very clean. I did get staff comments. I did get staff comments. Uh, I did provide a narrative, Michael's for narrative, hopefully that's such base with everything we have received. Local approvals from the town of Southington, above weapons, and planning and zoning is below the CEP and the Arab Corps of Engineers. It's funny, we're doing a mechanical dredging of pond. We needed a permit the minute we went in water and placed my permit here in the court. Didn't want anything to do with it, so we are dealing with the, uh, with the DEP, they have extended our permits that we gathered five years ago to continue work on this, on this project. Again, we do, will do most, or all are deep watering on Southington site. We do have a lay-down area here in case there is a wet, uh, material that may come out through the rain or whatever happens. But potentially, we're not looking to the drought water outside, but it will be a dry drought all through the area. The material will put down and then spread with a dozer. Uh, we're assuming they're going to be using about a twelve inch lift on each push, so they won't push it, fill up fifty, twenty feet of material, they'll lay it down slowly. Uh, when we're done, we expect a very fertile area. This is again, it's all sediment that's come from the upstream areas. So much like the Connecticut Valley and the Delta where you have all the nutrients of the soil. So this, uh, this fill will be much better conducive to Mr. McCauchee collecting his hay. He's got hay in the front, he's got hay in the back, and his requirement is just to make sure we can grow hay in the middle. So that's the intent we want to do. The, how should I phrase this? The bid package allowed for three years of work for the contractor to do this work. The company who retained feels like he's not going to need three years of work to, to do this. We had allocated time in both the fall and spring to do the work. He feels he can perform his work through the year, making necessary modifications during the camp season, which I kind of called June, uh, August, where the campers were on site. Where there may be some limited amount of work, they may do more trucky during that period. But basically, in the spring and in the fall, except for the coldest months where you can't get a boat out on the lake to do the work, he will do most of his excavation then. And I would anticipate after about a month's worth of dry, you'll then see material move out off that site and move into the state. I know Maury has figured five thousand trucks. I'm not going to dispute that. I find, just trying to think of a clever way I can sugarcoat that, but I can't sugarcoat that. There will be truck traffic on that road. Uh, to us, this is the perfect site because it's relatively close, uh, to the, uh, to the, uh, the Camp Sloper. There is direct access off a passage from Southington Road three sixty-four. And probably for a year and a half, or two years of some rather intense truck traffic happening at times, it will solve a problem at Camp Sloper, and it will kind of fix this area, which is kind of a, I feel is kind of a scar on this whole hill where the Myers really didn't have much time sort of left. And when you think about it, nine thousand yards to repair it, we all know, maybe Ken does, that they brought probably this much material out of the site and resold it off the site. So, so the Myers gravel pit over thirty, forty years of operation, that's like probably did close to a hundred fifty thousand yards of, uh, material on, on the site. So while it's unique from the standpoint of truck traffic, it's, you know, this, this road has bear that kind of truck traffic burden, maybe not as much as five thousand for the total project, but, uh, it has. We will work with the state, work with the town, put any necessary signage to indicate, uh, where the turnoff is, that trucks will be entering. Trucks will be leaving the site and make that entrance as, as safe as possible. And Mike also talked about getting testable, do whatever testing, you know, samples. Uh, I should note that Mr. McCauchee is very concerned about that too, so he does not want any kind of material coming on the site. So that's probably one of the requirements that the way is made with Mr. McCauchee. Uh, I should also note, there is a book that flows along the west valley side of the property that comes from the Wabba Dam's, uh, narrative. That's the one that broke about twenty-five, thirty years ago, forty years ago. Uh, we are, we are staying outside the, uh, the fine floodway and also within the wetlands, those same lines that we always use when we did the wetlands permit, so, uh, I see Jim's got no comment, so I assume everything is cool to say it with that. Basically, I know Maury needs to give us her comments, but, uh, we will provide all the permits, basically all the stuff that Mike had, we have recovered it, we will supplement it with additional information. You, so, you know, I know it's, I know it's a lot of fill, and I know the town side has much benefit from it other than town facing a scar on our property. But I would ask the commission to very much consider this because we feel it's an ideal solution. Mr. McCauchee's been cutting off the offers, pieces of properties that were at the charge. Uh, so it's not going to be a cost to the wife of this and, and what this is, uh, to the contracts, so contractors, the hall is exposed a bit. And I should say the contract will have somebody on site at all times. So he will be on site with the machine, directing the trucks for the disposal material. Uh, you know, there's, there's, uh, won't be a hazard thing where a thousand yards get dumped there, and then somebody comes out the site. There will be somebody at the site all the time. Normally, I'd be concerned about dust, but considering this is going to be material dry, I think the likelihood of dust is not there. But if there is dust, we're responsible for dust control too, so. Got some attention. Rose Troy got trucky pad. Any questions, or Maury wants to give her, uh, comments, I'd be more happy if you would respond to this.
Go ahead, Maury, though. I'm just checking all those things. So I do wanted to say that, um, you know, that same song, sorry, but the, um, you, I just left you with some staff comments, they are back one, I hope, where you, I know, through your relationships with Buzz, the, um, as well as the comments from the other departments. Um, the applicant did get comments, um, which were distributed to all of you, but equally conservation, which is, um, basically reiterating the same comments made by the town engineer and myself. Basics in the, uh, regulations with, with regard to the environmental testing, the deep watering, traffic paths, and erosion controls. Um, Mike's comments suggest that, um, you know, those be monitored and um, the town be re-alerted, particularly for the soil erosion controls and the activity after they've had a stagnant period. Um, one of the things with regard to truck traffic that, um, stood out as, um, a concern because there, I'm not aware of any requirement of them doing this, um, in this, um, regular protocols for using, utilizing the state road. But due to the volume that they also coordinate with DOT as well as the police department and our engineering department in case there's any activities, any projects coming up, big events at Timberland, maybe, you know, there's just any or any reason that truck volume should be coordinated or repaving or a COVID being compromised or any greenhouse so that, um, that there are no issues in that regard. Um, the rest of the funds at this time are pretty, uh, standard. Um, I would, I would also suggest that sightlines be confirmed, um, prior to use in case there's any regard to signage, that some signage, public awareness signage gets put up for the, uh, entering and exiting trucks, as well as the volume of traffic. You know, you want a bike race coming down the road, a whole bunch of trucks down the road at the same time, or even just public awareness, the trucks who will be exiting and entering the site. Um, and with that, check with the sightlines, you know, maybe coordinate the signs with the sightlines, make sure everything's good, you want safety. Um, I have been going back through the Myers gravel yard excavation permits. Um, I found documentation that said, uh, from a prior town attorney that, um, we found permits back to at least nineteen eighty-five, I found the file back to at least nineteen eighty-five, but that the excavation, um, pre-existed that and pre-existed our excavation regulations. So that was, and then they redid them up through, um, at least early two thousand, two thousands. At least, um, and from, um, nineteen ninety-one, uh, Mr. Bovee was doing those plans that, um, contours. So, you know, I'm like, one of my first thoughts was, how do you know you're restoring it to the same? You know, restoring it to usable versus restoring it to close to what it was is a difference.
Yes.
And, um, and he has plans at least back to the nineteen ninety-one, I believe. And I actually found some files for that, made five files part of that, so.
Just to clarify, the existing topo and scene there was, if you have shop rates, this is all new, new topo. So we have to rely on modifications of old, uh, because you're actually fielding out there, so.
Maury, do you have an actual picture of the site? I mean, you know how you could pull that, yeah, I actually want to recall it. Just so I want to make sure I'm thinking of the right location.
Well, go to the site, uh, a lot of the site went to the DOT's building, uh, well, turnpike. When they pulled them there.
Really? So that was the original.
That was, uh, all the sites.
And what you look at, I just want to point out two things. It's not, uh, my comments and Scott's comments, but I'll agree to it right now. Uh, we will do a free film meeting, so before we start filming, we'll get town staff, police, engineering, planner, she wants to immediately wake up or, and have a pre-fill conference out at the site. So even the state, uh, so, where you just work, you know, the state paid from the guy out there, what the contractor. Number two, I've got no problems in providing, uh, staff with like monthly reports on the sedimentation and erosion to make sure all that stuff is properly done. I'm not so concerned about this, but this area of mine, so it would be important. Stuff being maintained, I think we're showing both the combination of, uh, sil fence and hay bales on site here. Uh, we'd be more than welcome, happy to provide monthly reports for that, so.
I would, I would like to see, uh, the states go into, of course, state road.
Well, they'll review the traffic, they won't review the, that's the.
Of the, uh.
But they'll review the proof.
The roads. The roads entering Southington Road, uh, and would, uh.
Right.
All those should have a sign, have a stop sign, whatever they were. At the top traffic crossing, whatever, uh, Timberland law, of course, you know, same top traffic coming down. You know, I think that the town, uh, should write an index those sites.
I, I think we will work with the state highway department and get them whatever they need, and we'll supplement that with whatever the police department has been requiring in the state.
So a couple of things, I was wondering, um, five thousand trucks, I'm thinking about over the course of two years, obviously, they're not going to be running over the course of the entire project, I'm sure there's going to be days. What's, how many trucks do you think, um, on an average day are you going to see going into the property? Well, I, I just want, I was actually.
You're not going to be seeing trucks on Saturday and Sunday because we've got limited periods of operation that's permitted within, on the conference, not to be working.
So far, just because we have this nice pretty picture of him, can you tell me if, if, if Maury can roll the cursor around, where this?
If she can come closer to the house, the, that's, yeah.
The barn?
You see that hill in the back right there?
Uh huh.
That's the knob, and that's probably greener than it actually looks like.
It looks very nice. So one of the things I was going to say is I'm going to pull up a little bit older of you. I think nineteen ninety-eight is likely to show a bit of gravel a little better where our excavation was. If you don't get a headache, hold on a sec.
You see that, that area where there's no growth, where it's like up in the hill? That's the area that will be filled, that will go from the top, you can't, that is really the one area there. You can see right above that brown area, that's really the top of the bank that's located over in this location of the bank. So that area will be filled within, probably about a pad or twelve feet of material at, at the, at the worst case, and then it'll be blocked forward.
Not as far back as I thought it was, I'm sorry.
So the proposal for basically the, uh, the line or the top of
Right.
what is, is going to remain the same, so.
Right.
The fill will basically commence at that brown van and carry forward.
Correct.
And then it's going to. And then it's going to carry forward and then
Well, it's kind of hard to see now, but there's a kind of a hay line that's located between that bank and the, and the and the old house. And that's the area we're going to fill that that area that nothing is growing at the present time. Kind of in that area, yeah. It's, it's, it's hard to see on this here. I mean, I don't know if you could pick up and do the aerial here and if we could get a better picture of it.
Go up the driveway.
Yeah, put that here.
No, I'll, I'll
There we go.
There you are.
Oh, geez.
So that's an older picture. That's probably the gravel bank.
Is that a swimming pool there?
No.
Doesn't it look like a tarp?
No, those, so he has staking piles that he used to put material. So when he brought material in, he brought it, he mixed it. He called it. So that area that we're filling is probably a little bit further beyond, I would say, maybe you see where it gets darker green?
Yes.
That's kind of where the edge of where the fill, that's where the hay is growing back in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Up in that area, yeah. So that's kind of where the edge is and we're going to infill that whole area that's all browned out. We're not, you can see where the road is, you can see how far over. So we're not going extremely close to those trees on the left hand side because we're starting to get into the floodway. And I know that's pre or post flooded by the post post to am breaking right there. That's like a nineteen ninety-eight. So when I talk about the
Doesn't tell me the error.
When I talk about the scar, that's the scar. That's a time and that will be eradicated. And again, this is very firm, we don't think we need any cups on top of the sink. The key is, honestly, you're going to get some settlement of material. So if we put in cliffs, we'll slowly bring it up. We're going to get a patch, that's what the patch. That would finish with this. I mean, the last load is pretty much close to all the protection we have. There's really no silt. There's probably some sediment in there. Uh, but there's probably no silt because I don't think there's any silt back in the hills. It's all the the mountain soaks off of
You know, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be honest with you. This is my perception of the project. I mean, I understand what the Y is doing and I understand that this is an easy solution. And it's a pretty close, relatively close solution. What difficulty I have with this project is I cannot envision these people having this truck drop traffic five days a week. Because I know that we've had dump truck traffic on my street. And at one point I did call up police because I counted six trucks go by. And after a while, they become familiar with the roads. They tend to go a little faster. And, you know, I, I've seen bikers pedaling and having to go off on my lawn. And I've seen walkers with baby carriers get terrified and run for their lives into my driveway. And, and so I, I concern myself with that, but I also concern myself with the level of sanity of the people living in these houses along the road. And having to put up with the noise of the trucks traveling back and forth, back and forth. And it's not so much that you're saying, hey, you only have to put up with it for a week. The length of time involved in the project now. I'm not sure where the remedy is, but this is where my discomfort with the project sits. And I, I mean, that's just my perception. I, I don't know how to make it easier for them.
Like I said, I can't share a couple of numbers. I can go back to my clients, see what they can do to stand.
So that's kind of where I agree with Chair Moonbeal is that, that's why I asked the question earlier. What's the truck traffic we're talking about per day? Because when I did the numbers out quickly on my calculator, if you there would be constantly moving it over a year and a half, you'd be talking about nine trucks per day. If it was condensed into one year, you'd be talking about thirteen trucks per day. So I mean, if you can give us an idea of how many trucks or maximum amount of trucks that they would agree to bring in on the site, so we know how uh big of an impact that would have on that road, I think that would be helpful information.
Okay.
Um, and the other thing is I'm wondering about conditions. I agree with the neighbors. So if there was a way that we could say, uh, working into the idea of, you know, having a thing where the chargers can't be held. So no engine breaks, no banging tailgates at five AM in the morning when they're dumping material or by given afternoon, whenever the hours are. Um, be respectful of the neighbors.
I can go back to the client, talk to them about your concerns. Like go back to the, the the contractor, we can work on hours, we can work on restrictions that they can provide me. So that we mitigate as much as possible and lessen the activity on that site as much as possible.
Yeah, as, as I said, I, it's a, it's a unique resolution for what the, the, what's happening at Palm, so I can understand it. I just I think we really have to be mindful of the people who live on that street.
I, I can see it.
We don't want
On that street pretty good. Uh, a lot of houses are set back on that street. And some are set up next to the road. So maybe on the contract, as I say, you gotta go slower, the way the houses are close to the road. Uh, then the ones, the ones further away, you know, and you don't have jailbreaks and stuff like that.
I don't know. Truck traffic is truck after a while, it's just
It's a, it's not, it's not a
It's not a quiet thing.
It's just, you know, it's a more used road than you think it is.
Yeah, but you're saying, Brian, just to go back to your just rope calculation, you're saying nine trips in one direction?
I'm saying that if they are trucking, they are moving material constantly as they were digging it. Um, over the course of a year and a half, and I'm breaking that down into literally the days, the graph just my calculator out quick.
Oh, no, I, I'm not going to hold you to solid numbers, but just to give us a, a rough idea.
Yeah, so five hundred and forty-six, uh, there's five hundred and forty-six days in a year and a half. So you divide five thousand truck, truck trips by five hundred and forty-six, you get nine point one five trips per day. If you even condense it into three hundred and forty-six for a year. Sixty-four, that's about fourteen trips per day, which I don't think is uncommon for what the prior use of that property was. But I mean, that's why I'm wondering, is this going to be a constant flow with as the project's going on? Are these going to build up and then go free?
No, they, the, the way they operate, my understanding works is they will fill certain portions of these deep watering areas until the material's filled up, it's absolutely the water down, sad, the bad rain, weather, winds and stuff like that. And then they will take that material. So you say before two fifteen, I would even say venture seven to twenty of trucks on a busy day where they're cleaning out their bins. And then you may have three or four days where you have no traffic at all. And then they may step it up and do another twenty or so. So it, it won't be a per day type of thing. But again, I will talk to the contractor and I will see what he's figuring.
Okay.
Because he's already told us he's done this for these issues, so he must know exactly how many trips he needs. Well, numbers, you know, are always helpful.
Right.
Yeah.
And I can also talk them about as hours of operation as such.
Yeah, and you know, that's going to be my other concern is, is the hours. Wouldn't want it at five o'clock in the morning. Um, maybe there's also consideration potentially of not doing it during the rush hour time. You know, school buses out there during the following, this is creating enough track already. So just some of those considerations.
Yeah, and Steve, do you have any comments? And I'm going to go to you, Diane, next, okay? Steve, nothing. Diane, joining us by Zoom?
Um, I don't, I don't have um maybe as much concern with the number of truck, trucks per day. Um, but I think that, um, just for consideration, the aerial photo that we're looking at uh is not really representative of of the neighboring property at this point. Um, there are a number of houses that abut um that excavated area that are part of that Kokomo subdivision. So there are houses right there. Um, and uh my family used to bail hay on this lot. Um, and so I have firsthand experience coming in and out of that driveway with a tractor and a hay, hay wagon. And um that stretch of road is dangerous. Um, because you, the sightline, um, especially to the west um is kind of tricky, uh, especially later in the day with the sun um and traffic flying like a bat out of Hades coming through there. So there's lots and lots of accidents um in that hill area just to the west of where that driveway is. Um, so the trucks turning out of the driveway um and returning west would make for some uh potentially perilous incidents.
And I should note that subdivision that's located in this site, there is a house located above this location.
Yeah.
This lot next to it is over Mr. MacAskey's house, so he's not going to film on that lot. So a lot where that driveway scoots around that, that's not that it does. So the only houses located is actually off on this site, so it's kind of off on the range. It's a two way road, not that.
Yeah, Diane brings up a valid point with the traffic on Southernton Road. So I guess when you go back to the uh the Y or whoever you know, ask, are they going to be proposing to have perhaps some employees that would be at the, the I want to call it the dump site, for lack of a better word. But would they have anyone at that intersection that would maybe be able to slow down the traffic a little bit to let the trucks go out?
Talk to the contractor, why, see if they got personal on that site, what kind of signage?
Yeah, okay, great.
And maybe the whole package together more source.
Yeah.
So I'd be correct, yeah. Cause I've had people on my ass every day.
That's the only way to slow cars. But you understand what I'm saying? Somebody in the back could tell the truck, yeah, you can come out now or no. But um, yeah, so it looks like you've got some
I took a look like putting a flag down. Flag person down there.
Flagman, yeah, flagman.
Flag person.
Flagman.
You want to, they hold that sign, it's slow.
Yeah.
At two meetings with that flag back.
But anyway, all right, so you do have a little bit of, you might be able to hit those answers for a little while.
We'll work on that. I appreciate you hearing us up tight.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you bringing it before us and giving us a chance to review it. Diane, did you have anything else that you wanted to add at this point?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, terrific.
Thank you.
So um we're going to continue this. Will you do any motion?
For everybody to think about as well, is we do have our ordinance on construction noise. And that does limit the sum of the hours.
Oh, okay.
I, a year ago, so I voted it to you probably for freedom already, but I can't, it is an ordinance. Um, I think it's not before eight AM or seven AM, something like that. And
Well, some evening, we'll turn it a little higher.
Five AM is certainly earlier than the construction ordinance. And it's reduced on Saturdays and Sundays further. So, and that's only for construction noise. And this I would consider a construction activity.
Okay, all right. And so, um, do we need a motion about it?
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Oh, I came here to speak in opposition. I understand you're going to continue.
Oh, we are going to continue. We're not in a, we're not in a public hearing, but
I realize that.
Okay.
It is on the agenda. I have a taxpayer and citizen.
Okay.
Since, since I just listened to almost an hour's worth of presentation in favor, I'm going to take the covenants just in case I can't be back here and hear it again.
All right. Well, commission, do you want, I don't know if this is so
My experience is generally, if you've been on the commission longer, I don't really know that particular requirement, which generally we, we ask that they, that anyone submit concerns in writing so that we can distribute it as part of the package. However, um the commission has the ability to turn anything into public comment and public hearing. I just don't know if it has to be noticed as such so that anybody else can talk with, you know.
Do a audience of citizens in the beginning of any meeting. So we can do audits of citizens or citizens to bring anything up. And it could be the same night as this, this item, but then they could bring up the
Yeah.
Item, anything up with the audience of citizens.
Yeah.
Not as a normal thing, you don't do audience.
Yeah.
On slide.
I understand.
We can notify it for the next middle of the meeting saying that this will be all citizens. And if someone's got a concern, they can bring it up there.
I understand there's no requirement for a public hearing.
Yeah.
But I don't believe there's any reason why you can't order one. You'd want to be on the agenda if you didn't have some discretion whether it was proven or not.
That's right. Just try, try and give you time to do that by audience of citizens.
I spent, I spent an hour here listening. I had to send my wife to the airport to pick up our company coming from Seattle
Okay.
because I didn't want to miss this meeting. Okay?
The problem is when they contest the law on the outside of a public hearing. Uh, or audience of citizens. And they often may have a problem.
I just want to see if I can, I, because we don't want to get to a technicality here. So I just want to get clarification. All righty, let me see if I can find something in my little book. All right. Diane, would you go offhand? I'm going to ask Diane, because sometimes she has
Um, well, I agree with what Maureen said, that typically we would ask for written um comments to be part of the package. I wouldn't object to that, but I, I don't think we should accept um testimony as if it's um public comment.
Written comments are a waste of time. With all due respect, you'll give, you'll give written comments a few minutes. I donated a couple hours of my time to prepare a few remarks. They're not long, but I live on Stockington Road around the corner from this property. I've been there for forty-five years. I'm more familiar with this property than anyone except and I would just ask the courtesy of being able to speak.
Oh wait, and we're trying to find the proper venue for you to do that.
I appreciate that.
Because this is not a public hearing, so we can't technically accept a public comment. We understand where you're coming from and we're trying to find a resolution here.
Is it possible to order a public hearing? I know it's not required.
I would, it would be up to the, it would be up to the commission whether or not they wanted to schedule us as a public hearing.
Because the reason I'm here alone is this was posted yesterday. All my neighbors work for them and I have a good fortune to retire. And, and the, the agenda item doesn't have the street address or the owner's name. No one in the world is going to know this was going to happen.
Okay, I think perhaps the best way for us to proceed um is that because obviously, because it's not a public hearing, it hasn't been noticed as a public hearing, it's just a discussion for the commission. I think perhaps the best thing to do would be to um take under guidance, uh, Mr. Ziegman's um suggestion that because this is going to be continued to the next meeting because Mr. Bovee has some issue, some feedback from us and so some concerns um that he's going to have to do the discovery and bring back to us. The best thing for us to do is continue with this being a discussion between us and the, and the commission and the applicant. However, on the next agenda, we can designate an audience of citizens which would appear at the beginning of the agenda and it would allow any citizen to address the commission regarding any item before the commission. So in other words, even though it would be you returning back to us, uh, you would be able to get up and read into record your comments. We would hear them and take them into consideration. So that then you could go on with your day. And when Mr. Bovee returns before us, we would have that information available as well. So, so in other words, we would be enlightened by what you're going to share and be able to talk to Mr. Bovee about your concerns. And obviously And be able to talk to Mr. Bovee about your concerns. And obviously, he will be here and he'll hear them. And he'll be able to take the time and be able to respond to them.
He would be the same evening as it's when he returns.
Yes, that that, yeah, exactly. But the audience of citizens will be upfront on the agenda. So that you won't have to sit through the agenda to get to that item. It's going to be upfront. You come back, read your remarks. And then, uh as I said, you can just go, you can continue on with your guests or whatever and but we would receive.
They'll be gone by then.
Oh, okay.
You know the three things.
Always bring it here. It'll always be fun. But anyway, um.
Okay.
So we are getting information from our attorney counsel, yes. And um she said it was not the, you know, it was noticed in the public hearing, then members of the public can speak. And you can direct it be noticed as public hearing. So that you can speak um or accept written submission. Um I've been asked about the audience of citizens.
Why you don't do a public hearing?
No, no audience of citizens exists and so on.
Oh, perfect. Okay. So it would have to be a public hearing. Well, how much notice for the public hearing? Is it fourteen days?
Minimum of ten. If you get it in the, if we can get it to the paper, the paper just extended their deadline. If we can get it to the paper, we can. On Monday, or if we can't get it in on Monday, that's too late. We ran the rest of the act for the fourth to run on Saturday.
Okay, um commission.
We'll do our best.
Let's do a struggle.
That's what you like, or you can accept your submission.
I will point out, if I could, there are a lot of new houses, uh Christopher Way. I know you had some problems with the developer, but these people want their property to have.
He's providing it for me right now.
I don't want their writing.
No, no, I'm sorry. It's going to be a cost for appeal.
All right, okay.
Their side.
All right. So we're going to stop the communication right now. And I understand what you're saying from, but you know, um do we want to do this as a public hearing then?
I won't discuss that. We can discuss it right now. Or discuss it at the end of the meeting like we know who to discuss things.
What? How do you, how do you just?
I'm just, I'm just wondering if we should, we shouldn't basically discuss it right now, uh probably should, should uh discuss it.
Well, we have to, we have to give direction to uh to Maureen.
No, I'm just kidding.
And also, I think Art would like to know what's, what's the scoop.
Um. So the main concern would be the applicant granting, granting an extension if he needed one for a public hearing. But with the submission date, it was submitted on June twenty seventh, but the receipt date was there for July seventh. And you have sixty five days from then to then to decide a site plan. That would be September ninth. So you have three meetings before that, eight four, eight eighteen, and nine one. All occurring prior to the deadline to make a decision.
Okay. All right, um so we don't have an audience of citizens? Um Steve, Sandy, Row, Dave, Brian, Diane, anyone comment?
Um I think if, um I mean, obviously, we need to follow the advice of our attorney.
Okay, uh yes. So we don't have the audience of citizens, but uh I'm asking uh for your uh reaction to a public hearing. If we can get the notice set, because that's going to be the thing.
Well, if you want, if you want a public hearing and we can't, and the notice can't be run by Monday, then it would have to be pushed to the eighteen. Instead of the next meeting, that would be two meetings.
And during that time, the applicant has time to say yes or no, basically. Or don't do it.
It still falls.
I'm trying legally, legally in my mind, trying to say.
It still falls within the sixty five days to decide the application for any of those.
Yeah, we still have sixty five days.
And then the alternative is not a um public hearing endeavor. So that's always allowed for.
Yeah, so.
And if we can run it in time, we'll run it. I think you can say the next available, the next noticeable public hearing, a regular meeting.
Okay.
We can put it in whatever it's posted at, if that, if you choose to go public hearing.
I'll, I'll make a motion to add this to the agenda right now, so we can discuss it and vote on it.
All right. You want to add?
This is a.
Should we know your motion in the public hearing?
To have it go to hold a public hearing?
Yeah, so.
Make a motion to change the application to a monthly as a public.
Or add it to the agenda, add it to the agenda for weeks.
All right.
Make that motion.
Uh.
And then go to that point.
Does everyone understand the motion?
Is Tim saying to add it to the agenda to discuss later?
Discuss now or later, doesn't matter.
Adding it to the agenda to decide if it's going to.
Decide if it will be.
If it's going to be a public hearing. But so he, this motion is to add the item to the agenda now to make a decision whether or not this is going to a public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Mr. Josie has a second. Any further discussion on this? And all those in favor of adding this to the agenda for discussion now, say aye.
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 All right, those opposed. So, okay, so we're going to discuss this, adding it to the agenda as a public hearing. Versus just having this a continued discussion with perhaps uh uh public submitting written uh letters or communications to the.
Just trying to make it as clean a toy.
I know. Well, well, no, I'm just, well, this is, but these are the options.
Yeah.
We're either going to do it as a public hearing, or we're going to go ahead and have it with written communications. But um at at this point, I really don't know if there's going to be a difference or not. Because even if you have the public, uh if you have the public input via letter or communication, it would have to be read into record. So you would still have Brian reading letters into record. And um as a secretary, so uh as opposed to the folks coming out and addressing the permission directly.
And a special meeting or a public hearing is a. Is why, that's just only, right? And that uh, I don't.
A special meeting? No, no, no.
Uh a public hearing.
No, we're just doing a public.
Public hearing. It has to be notified and it has to be.
Yeah, we'll read.
What, our regulations say what is a public hearing, special permit, uh other items that are automatically called for a public hearing. Uh. So, so I don't know the answer of making a public hearing on something that doesn't require a public hearing.
You, you can choose, the commission can choose to hold a public hearing on an item that's a site plan. However, they still have to follow the deadlines for site plan decisions as opposed to um special permits, which have a longer decision period. And open the, the length of time you can open the public hearing, close the public hearing, et cetera. You have more days to get through the process when it's a required public hearing. When it's a, a optional public hearing that the commission decides to hold, then you're bound by the sixty five days to make the decision. Of on any, as you would for a site, any other site plan application. Um that said, there's still, the extension period's still up. If needed. Again, I think you're well within all of our requests.
Okay.
I hear what you're saying.
Sandy, my thought process is that. I would be in favor of a public hearing for this, because I think some people are able to verbally put their opinion out there much better than a written. Written word or written opinion. Um I just think it's, it, you know, we're having discussions here about the traffic and the amount of trucks and the dust. And we don't live on those streets.
Mm hmm.
Um, you know, it's not, I, I just think of having something with this, a project of this size that's going to go on for potentially two months to two years. I think a public hearing isn't a bad idea.
Okay, um. Brian or Steve?
Yeah, I would agree that Sandy's uh, you know, logic is sound. Kind of like the idea of, I want to question the idea of precedent, you know, of opening this type of applications of that public hearings going forward. Um I guess that's my concern, kind of why I'm on the fence with this one. But I do understand that it is a big project in scope. Um this is a tough one.
Okay, um Steve? Doesn't matter. Does that one sing? I want to verbalize that for Brian, who's trying to do that.
I agree to a Brian's.
Okay, so Tim?
Uh again, I uh. Our Tom attorney said we can make it a public hearing. I think I would rely on our Tom attorney. Uh I, years that we've been on the commission, I've never taken an item.
Yeah.
And put it to a public hearing that's not a site plan.
Well, that's not a bad.
Something like that, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Uh so, so uh. I don't know, I don't know what the. The legal sites of it are on the ballot yet.
Well, I think it's just a, a question of do we get the notice uh in on time? And then when we can know, if we can get the notice in tomorrow or whatever, then we'll be good to go for the next meeting. If not, it just gets pushed off.
I suppose the applicant, uh will have time to.
Well.
Say something if they don't want it uh or not, you know, I mean uh before that public hearing visits, and ten days.
And it's a.
So the policy for ten days, so.
Yeah.
They have time to, they have a problem with it to say we have a problem.
Well, Mr. Bovee is.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
We have a public hearing, this is speaking, we have to notice this project. It's certain, certain matters and all that stuff.
We have, so, I know. So the, the decision of whether or not to hold the public hearing is up to the commission. The commission makes that decision. I do not believe there needs to be an agreement with the applicant on that. It's your decision to make. The applicant would have to send by certificate of sailing uh the buyer's notices that are assigned out. For our regulations, because our regulations call for public hearing stats not happening.
So we're going to need your notice, public hearings.
Yeah, well, we, yeah, we also have a sample letter that could be done, but Brian will have that in the morning. I'll, they have to, I have to make that so she can try to get it to the paper as soon as possible.
Okay, just more clarification. Diane, we want to put to you for your input as well.
Um I'm, I'm kind of on the fence too. Um I think that uh having written, uh written testimony would make um for a more efficient process. Um because we're not going to be dealing with the uh timing of the uh notice and the paper. And um so I, I see that having an advantage. Um but I um also feel very strongly about there being transparency in our process. Um so that uh people are comfortable with the work that we do. Um but uh there is a little bit of danger in setting precedent, so um I honestly, I could go either way.
Yeah, I find myself in the same place, but um you know, we have served on the mission for a long time between Mr. Zigmont and myself. And we can honestly say this is the first time that we've come across this issue, which is shows we got a pretty good track record. So this is the only exception to the rule, and so be it. But I think that um I, you know, I hope that the applicant understands with the um. The reading this up the.
Written, or written, or taken in testimony anyway.
Well, written or not, I mean, because I guess my point being is that if we accept the written communications, we still have to read them into record.
Yeah.
So.
It's put, it'll be written, written by the commission into record.
And it would be no different than if somebody just addresses us as a person. So.
I just got me confused a little bit.
No, I know. It's not, this is not, this is not an easy one. It's really not. Okay, but let's go ahead and move on, because I know everyone's sort of sitting on the edge of their seat wondering what we're going to do. So I, 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 I'm under the impression that the public hearing is basically the consensus of the commission. We do hesitate because we don't want to set precedence. However, uh we see this as the best resolve all the way around. So at this point, I'm going to move this to a public hearing. Please, Maureen, let's just.
We have the vote.
Oh, the vote.
You do have.
Oh, okay. All right, so we have the motion. Uh so do we have a motion to, so?
I won't make it to vote here.
I don't think you have a motion. You had a motion to add it to the agenda.
Okay, so let's take a motion to move it to public hearing, or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to uh schedule a public hearing to discuss this.
All righty, uh Ms. Josie has the motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Sandy Popola. Further discussion on this item? Then all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Oh.
Failed.
Whoa.
Failed.
Three to three. So the motion fails.
Yeah.
No public hearing.
Well, we'll take written testimony.
Yeah, okay. Okay, all righty, so that's that. All right.
You've done a tremendous disservice to the people in that neighborhood. I thank you for your time, for you've done a tremendous disservice.
Um, okay, so no. All right, then moving on. All right, so we see you guys. Um the next date is, what's the next date for the meeting? Uh August fourth. We'll see you guys. August fourth. He's hiding behind the screen. I can't see.
August fourth.
August fourth, okay. All right. Okay, on to commission business. I was excited. Um A, uh discussion of modifications to the approved site plan for accessory structures at Smart P at seventy six Fullway. Okay, what do we got?
Can I just make a comment?
Yes, please.
For adding this to the agenda um later than, you know, but they are under construction.
Mm hmm.
And this is a modification to an approved plan, so.
So they're probably on improvement?
If, yeah, it's, well, it's a change to the approved plan. So um and they're under construction, so it was something I felt could be described by a half the hearing. I mean, you get much information. If I write a staff report, I wouldn't be able to tell you, you know, there wouldn't really have been anything for you to analyze. They're describing what the changes are, because the plan doesn't do the, doesn't describe the changes very well.
So you're going to help us with the changes, right?
I'll, I'll do my best.
Okay, and you are?
Phil Reckerman, Shu Kasey, Professor Shunshin, Principal with firm L.C. Kirsten Kasey, located at six thirty Main Street, Chrome. Uh I'll start up already. I know it's helpful, but all the plans I have on board, I also have on Flash Drive.
I see. I have them.
These are, these are the colored ones, so it's on the board side. I'll have it out here.
Okay.
And they're all.
If I have one.
Pretty ones, big colored ones.
All right.
Forty seconds to try to.
Yep.
Um I guess I'll just go through a couple of the issues prior to it. Um first of all, with, with this meeting, uh I have Jonathan Fife, uh from Smart P Tech. Uh who is going to be the operator of a site at the end of Fullway, uh ninety seventy six Fullway. Uh little history, we were before you in July of two thousand and twenty one. Uh at that point, we received approval uh for a change of use of the existing building that was on this property. Uh the property used to be Lindsay Lindsay. Uh is that. Uh, the property used to be Lindsay Lindsay, uh, is at the end of Fuller Way. Uh. Smart V Tech is going to be occupying and operating out of it, and a little description of what Smart V Tech does. Um, they take in uh expired meat products uh from retailers, grocery stores. Um, bringing into the facility, uh, they bring it through a drying process. Uh, and then once it's all dried out, it's made into almost like flour. Uh, and then loaded into trucks on the outside building and is used as. Uh, so it's recycling, basically a reuse of expired meat products. Um, this is some newer technology involved, technology, um, and it's the first one that's going to be in Connecticut. Uh, and as we've gone through the process of actually constructing the building and making the improvements, the site associated with this. Um, there were several modifications that we need to make. Um, and if there's any questions about the process, Jonathan, help me answer any questions about the process, so. Um, but on the first page that you have up before you, um, what this is, I'll link to the subject property itself, again, seventy six Fuller Way. Uh, so take that very end of cul-de-sac on the east side, or on the right hand side. Um, and the area shown in brown or tan on this plant uh was the existing footprint uh for the old Lindsay 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 uh property. Sorry. Premier, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Thanks for correcting. Um, and then there are two driveway curb cuts into the property, uh, the driveway curb cuts remain. Um, for site improvement itself, um, all we were looking at doing was modifying Parkland site, leaving all the parking spaces, majority of parking spaces. All we were doing is the green areas you see on the plan are landscape islands that we're incorporating into them to meet your requirement for surface setting and landscaping within Parkland itself. So we're actually just the overall work is covered. Um, if you flip one page, or you did something, you know, the blow up of that area, um, they go. So it's just a little blown up section of that area. Um, the, what, what happened is we went through the process, if you were to take a look at the original architecture plans, what was proposed to happen? Is we were going to take the existing building, but because of the process going on inside, uh, the existing building was at a height of eighteen, eighteen point eight feet. Processing equipment inside is higher than that, we needed sections of the building that were bumped up to about forty feet, uh, so there were sections of the building. Uh, that we were moving, actually oriented, if you could go like maybe two or three, uh, probably two sheets ahead, there's an elevation of what the building is supposed to look like, okay? So this is the elevation of the building as modified, uh, you see on the upper elevation, there was one section to the back, to the far left. Uh, that was being bumped up to a height of forty feet, and then one section in the middle, uh, that was also being bumped up to a forty feet. Uh, as we worked on final plans of construction uh with the contractor, uh, we found it was actually less expensive to polish the whole building. And put a brand new building on the same footprint. Um, so you see the elevations is the actual building that was constructed on site, has consisted of forty, forty feet. Uh, so a lot of equipment could happen within the inside, could go with more, it's a color print, we can actually show this here a little bit more of the building, uh, would look like.
I'll just note that, um, we did bring that, I think, into you for discussion of putting, you know, of them rebuilding on exactly the same footprint. Um, no other site changes.
So uh, this is the, the, as I was saying, it was built on the property, it's this point, uh, the top elevation is, we could actually see roadway, uh, the elevation on the bottom. Uh, is the elevation for the opposite side of the whole side, away from the roadway, but again, it was just less expensive to actually demolish, demolish the whole building and serve it, yes.
I have a question, if the, the height of the building will be forty feet, is that because of the processing?
Yes, the processing inside.
Is it by cranes or something?
No, there's dryers inside, there's a bunch of acting systems inside, so a lot of it is inside.
Okay. Alright, so it's required, okay.
And, and that part was already, yes, this was all, yeah, ready. Terminated action.
If you may go back, go back to the site, so the, the second sheet. So uh, as part of the process, again, what happens is the, the raw material is brought into the north side of the building, so the farthest side away from the road. It's loaded into the building, uh, you can actually see on this site plan, it's equipment inside the building. Uh, that's where the, the product is put into dryers, it goes through a whole system that dries it out. Uh, and then eventually what happens is on the backside or the upper portion of the building. Uh, at the upper radiant corner, you'll see a red rectangle. Uh, that was the area, uh, we had to post a concrete pad. Uh, on that pad, there were going to be two silos, uh, what would happen is the final product was being put into the silos. From the silos, there's a conveyor that would load it into a truck along the back of the building. On this upper portion, uh, we're, we're, because right now, you're gonna see, uh, basically a red line, looks like almost a, a shovel, I'll say. Um, that is a scale, uh, that was originally proposed and approved as part of this project. Uh, the original scale we were proposing is called a, a pad or elevated scale, uh, so basically what happens is they pour a concrete pad. They put the scale on top of this, so by the time you're done, the scale is actually sitting about two, two inches, thirty inches on the ground. To accommodate that scale, uh, you actually need to build ramps on either side, so the tractor trailer can get up onto scale and back off. So you'll see the la- larger triangular section that I, uh, and that was rammed super proposed as part of that to accommodate uh this, this scale. Uh, what was going to happen is from the silos, uh, it was going to be conveyor into the tractor trailer sitting on scales, so they can make way as it was done, as it would be loading. Uh, as we went, again, went through the process of ordering materials, uh, and started construction, wow, we actually found out it was being organizable to do a scale that was in a pit. Um, so we actually had constructed a foundation, uh, which is represented by a purple line, purple rectangle, uh, with the gray hatching on, on this plant. Uh, the bits about two feet around, scale is in that pit, uh, so basically it's almost level with the surface. All we have from beyond it are two ten foot wide aprons on the side of it. Um, so overall, the, the scale became much smaller, but it's in a very similar place. Uh, again, this is all, uh, all the technology as compared to plants. In addition to, for efficiency, uh, was found out, it was a lot better if the silos were moved more towards the center of the building. Um, excuse me, and also we figured, uh, we needed, based on my volumes, we are gonna need additional storage area, so there was actually four silos proposed. So you'll see the four circles on right opposite scale, um, that's where the silos are removed to, uh, rather than having them in the rectangle. In addition to, to make the whole operation easier on the back, uh, one contiguous concrete pad represented by the light gray area, poured along the back of the building. Um. Um, one important thing to note, uh, is that with the height of this equipment, silos, and if you can go to, I think it was what elevation actually showed the silos on it, uh, you know, black line. Uh, elevation, um, it's important to note, when you take a look at the building from the road, all this equipment is behind it. Uh. That, I think that one.
That one?
Uh, maybe I'm wrong. Uh, as you take a look at this from the, from the road, you cannot see any, no, 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 sorry. Uh, you cannot see any of the equipment that's behind it, it's all shielded by the building, it's just nothing, so that's what the silos look like behind the building. We cannot see them all the way, there's no other developed or property behind the site, you can't, you can't see it from a public view, it's all behind the building. Uh, as we also went through the process of developing how to, um, handle the mechanisms to load the trucks. Uh, one of the things that came up is when they're actually loading the truck, uh, if you can just imagine, basically what this is, a tractor trailer. With an open dump body with, with a canopy over top of it. So what happens is when they're loading it, the canopy has opened, uh, and then the conveyor, there's a closed system all the way up, the conveyor that feeds into the open body, but the canopy open. What you probably realized is during inclement weather, uh, this food product is open to the elements. So, uh, what we actually coming back for this evening is as part of the scale, uh, they actually like to put a cardboard structure over top of that scale. Uh, once again, uh, the cardboard structure is just a, a steel, uh, cardboard like you would see in the, um. At a, I'd say a residential house for temporary storage, it's a pre-manufactured steel structure. Uh, it just encompasses a scaled area, uh, I don't have an actual picture of it, um, but again, based upon its height and its location, it's entirely back building, you've never seen it. Uh, it's totally covered, this just covers the scale, it's not missable at all. But again, we apologize for taking up on this, but it's, again, it's a process to realize that there's this potential issue, uh, with the feed, which is almost like a flower substance. Um, that would get wet as they fill the trucks, so they just wanted to make sure, uh, it was secure and covered. Uh, so that's the accessory structure, uh, that was referred to, that we came back to, uh, request to put it in. In addition to, uh, because they do have some trucks, uh, we also had proposed on the site plan to install, that wasn't on the original site plan. Something called a kind ball, so a kind ball that is a fuel storage, uh, cell.
Can I stop you for one second? I believe I have elevations from the, um. From the permit plan that I. I, because you were discussing that, I thought it would be more appropriate.
There is, yeah.
Yeah. Share, so I just. This screen. These are the permit plans, so they're not, you know.
So this is an isometric plant, it's, it's, it's just a, a steel frame structure that goes directly over the, uh, the scale house. Or the, the scale itself, so the tractor trailer is open up all events, tractor trailer could drive it.
What will it be, what will it be covered with?
It's covered with a metal roof.
It's oak, so it's gonna be a metal roof, okay.
So if I, if I can.
I guess I'm looking at the skeleton.
Yes, if you look at the skeleton.
Yeah, so.
And if I understand correctly from, uh, the application meeting we had, the metal will come partially down the sides. Um, I think about to the.
What is actually some more things on the side?
The openings at the side to about that level, and not all the way to the ground.
I have a question on this, uh, here. Uh, you're. Taking a conveyor belt or something to put that into the truck, right? Uh, it's a powder type situation. Uh. Is that powder going to? Dust, storm, the area, basically.
Well.
Uh, that's my question, because if you have the metal only. Halfway down the sides or whatever, uh, the powder should go land somewhere and. It will put. So it's somewhere outside.
Let me have Jonathan come up and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's the process.
Yeah, thanks so much, I'm Jonathan Fife from Smart V Tech.
Yeah, hi.
Alright, thanks for having me, uh, so, uh, it's actually a fully enclosed screw, it's not an open conveyor belt, so. A conveyor belt with powder, but it's a, it's just a circular structure, it's fully enclosed, so basically it comes through the building. Fully enclosed, it goes into and penetrates the, uh, uh, this, the metal structure there.
Mm-hmm.
Again, fully enclosed, there's a, you know, flange and a, uh, right around, it goes into the structure and it loads the truck and that's the only.
I just, just a one that when it drops into the truck. Uh, how much of a? Boom of a.
Oh, no, it goes basically right over the truck, the, 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 the metal structure is around it. And it drops right into the truck.
So it's like this huge straw that comes out really.
Exactly, it goes, it's a, it's like a, it's a six inch tube, basically.
Yeah.
Something like ductwork in your house, looks like that, there's just a screw in it that's moving the material.
Yeah.
Um, and then it, it goes into the, that steel structure above the truck, so it's, you know, fourteen feet in air. Um, it's sort of the top of that structure, and it, it, this group ends in the middle of the, uh, the truck, where the tractor trailers are, and it just loads the tractor trailers.
So it might have a cone or something.
Yeah.
Uh, dressing it out, so it's dispersed.
Uh, I'm just, I'm just worried of the farming, farming inside that structure.
So.
Uh, with the powder and, and that the.
It's full, it's fully enclosed on the sides, so it's not a.
Sandy? So it'd be very similar to say it's, um, some farmers going out to their silo to get corn, what, and it comes out with a metal tub, dumping and.
That's it, yeah.
Okay, alright. Okay. Yeah, now we got the visual. Alright, good deal, alright.
So the, the only other item was, uh, again, what they could react is what the process was, we call it a combo unit, combo unit is a, uh. A precast concrete structure with a fuel cell in it, uh, for holding fuel for their tractor shells. Uh, so we have this concrete structure, uh, that sits in back corner, uh, so it's sitting here at the northwest corner of Parkland Lot. Uh, it's no bigger than the shed, um, and as part of that to protect the kind ball unit also. And any filling operations, we also proposed to put a much smaller, uh, structure, cardboard structure over top of that, so it's like having a shed over the top of the combo unit. Once again, I was out there today, uh, where this is situated, like you cannot see it from the road, uh, it would be all the setback requirements. Uh, it's an accessory structure, so it's actually got a five foot setback requirement, a spit table you bring up there. Or you just side it up a little bit more.
I'm gonna.
So what I did here is I took the original zone table of the site plan, uh, so you'll see, first column is the requirements, uh, under the GI zone, you know, the sheet. So, uh, the required items is the second column, uh, the black one, and the third column was what was out there previously. Uh, the red column is what we originally proposed, uh, and the purple is what's actually modified. All the columns are the same, other than the building coverage, because now we including, uh, the cardboard units as part of the building coverage. Uh, what you're gonna find, I can't read over here, I'm sorry. We were, we were allowed up to, uh, thirty five percent building coverage, and I want to say we're about twenty two.
Twenty three point three.
Twenty three point three, so significantly under. Your previous coverage, uh, you're actually gonna notice that on the, uh, required is eighty percent, the original site actually exceed what was required. As part of the modifications for adding landscape parking, I also did the park lot, we actually brought it up there to bring it back in compliance, compliance. In addition to, uh, with the other months, some other modifications we made with the scale location that actually, um, decreased from his coverage. The only other thing that really changed was the height of the building, again, uh, at so, you're allowed to have, uh, free spring building maximum height of forty five feet. This is a one story building, forty feet, so we're under the height requirements. Uh, and then also we added a line for the dimension, rear setback for the carport, uh, to the rear yard, uh, you're allowed to have twenty five feet, uh, or about twenty seven point four three feet. So you can see that required, too. Otherwise, all the other setbacks are the same, again, the building, the office right on the same foundation, so it's, you know, same setbacks, uh. The overall square footage, uh, was the same, uh, it was only the height of the building that changed. Uh, so with that, I'll conclude my presentation.
Well, I got, I got one question.
Okay, how ten?
The field, the fields, uh, uh, that's outside of the, uh. Like, uh, hour right away there, or easement?
Yeah, the, the easements, that's why.
It's that line, so it's outside, it's a, okay, and then, but your parking lot goes into the easement now, right?
It always do. There's, there's driveways in the east there.
Well, I, I understand that, but, uh. I mean, have you discussed that with electric company, because if they gotta come in there and, and use the easement, they go cut up your parking lot. You know, and so you gotta have.
Yes.
You gotta have some kind of arrangement with the electrical company.
So if you were to take a look at the original, uh, site, there was actually a driveway along the back.
Oh, I know, I, I tarred it. I know it was, it was over a lot.
Right, so we actually don't have any parking with the electrical easement, again, this is the line of electrical easement here. So it's no park, it's just that driveway that was already there, uh, we actually, we're gonna, we're gonna say like, we're removing it from, uh.
Uh, from that, that's what I did. Uh, I just wouldn't, you know, maybe you want to discuss that where it goes across the line there with the electric company that's, you know, okay with that, I think it'd be okay.
They didn't wear it, I mean.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, they.
Because, you know, they, they, they want to make sure that they can dig it up sometimes, if something happens.
As I went by the site today, to, uh, to, especially before I came here, the electric company was actually, they were doing transferment stuff.
Uh, I have a question, it's only because of when this product. When this process begins, you're, you're getting, uh, meats or whatever that are.
So it's not, let's, let me clear, it's not spoiled meat products, it's, it's meat products that are beyond the shelf life that they can sell. So it's still, it's suitable?
Okay.
Correct the wrong John, I think.
Yeah, I mean, meats are actually very little, uh, like.
Uh, yeah, it's on the phone, so we can get on our recording, and I guess my question is, is directed. When you go through this process, I mean, do we have to consider ourselves with, uh, the factory emulating any kind of smells or odors into the neighborhood? when you go through this process, I mean, do we have to consider ourselves with, uh, the factory emulating any kind of smells or odors into the neighborhood?
Uh, it's mostly, uh, uh, especially starting at bakery products and, uh, it's all, we have to process it pretty much the same day we get it. So it's, it's processed quickly, everything happens inside the building. Sorry, everything happens inside the building. Um, all the processing and, uh, it's, you know, recent, you know, it's, it's, it's things that are off the production line for food manufacturers or very recently expired supermarkets.
So, so I imagine that from a management's perspective, you would have to be careful how you schedule these things coming in, because you don't want to take in more than you can process.
Yep.
Because you don't want these products sitting around. Alright.
Exactly.
Okay, that's
It's an improvement that I saw.
Yeah, exactly. Question, any other questions? Mr. Briella, Roken, Diane, any questions?
Yeah, yes, I do.
Okay, here it is. For us.
Thank you. Um, I, um, Maureen, could you or, um, uh, anybody explain, uh, in the easement area, there's a tower that's indicated?
Where?
There's, uh, so there's a high tension CLB that crosses the northeast corner of the property.
Gotcha, okay.
Uh, attention tower and, and all property. Again, we actually removed pavement from that area, um.
I just was curious what it was. I saw it marked there and it was big and square.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's
Kind of scary, isn't it?
Yeah. Um, and so, uh, looking at the, um, the plans for the building, um, it seems it could benefit from some windows and natural light coming in. Um, I'm wondering if that would be a possibility. I'm also wondering about, uh, whether there's plans for mechanicals to be on the rooftop above that forty-foot line. If you can address those questions, and I have others after that.
So the building actually came back, we decided to demo the building, it actually came back for staff. It was reviewed and the building's already up. It's, it's, the old buildings were taken out and it's already in place. Uh, so it's always um, for mechanicals, uh, like for, for electrical supply and everything, uh, it's, it's on the ground behind the building. Uh, John, you talked about HVAC and like, yeah, was there a whole process?
Yeah, there's nothing above the, the Sorry, there's nothing. I may need our subcontractors to, uh, more, to describe how, uh, uh, how it works, but the size of the building or, uh, the roof is and uh, and, and ducting, so, uh, there's nothing
Okay, so there's nothing on the rooftop. Okay.
Okay, um, I'm also, uh, curious about, um, the hours of operation, uh, whether there's gonna be trucks, uh, sitting overnight perhaps? Um, or, uh, you know, what the truck traffic is in and out of there. But particularly the overnight. And then, uh, the other question that I have has to do with the process itself. Um, you mentioned, uh, receiving baked goods, bakery goods. Uh, I know all of these things come in packaging. What happens with all of that waste?
Uh, during, uh, during the process, we, uh, we have a de-packaging system. So if we get in a, you know, bread with, uh, that's packaged from a supermarket, we put it in the de-packaging system and, uh, it's very effective. The organic food goes uh, to the processing side of the wall. It's a series of blending steps and then drying. Um, and then the, uh, the waste that's generated goes to a compactor that's sitting, um, that's sitting right towards, you see the compactor right, uh, in the, the inside.
Here, right?
No, it's actually to the left, uh, you see, um, to the north side of the building, yeah, right there. So that's the, that's the de-packaging system and then the compacters east of the de-packaging system, just a bit east, right inside.
It's inside the building.
It's inside the building, yeah. Um, and, uh, it's, it's pretty clean, so it's gonna be mostly plastic, uh, papers, uh, things like that, so, uh, things you'd see at a supermarket. Um, on truck traffic, our hours are probably, uh, they're uh, you were finalizing everything, but likely around seven-thirty to five. So it's not a, yeah. No, no, it's not a twenty-four hour operation.
Will trucks be staying overnight waiting to be loaded another, you know, like the next day kind of a thing, or?
Uh, there's a pretty big parking lot. We may leave, uh, a few trucks on site, but, um, uh, you've got to store it through that.
So, um, the reason I was curious about the packaging is I noticed no dumpsters, um, located on the exterior of the building, so I think that explains why. Um, but it seems like maybe there would be need for dumpsters for, uh, waste other than the de-packaging. Um, and so the de- de-packaging, um, how often is that emptied?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll have those inside the building. If there's another, uh, trash bin or, or, um, something, we'd have that inside the building. So, sorry, what was your second question?
The de-packaging, how often is that emptied?
How, how often is the compactor or the?
The, the compactor. Um, I'm thinking of it as a potential for fire issues with, um, uh, you know, compressed, compression and degradation builds heat. So, uh, I assume the fire marshal looked at this, Maureen?
So I'm, was just gonna say, so the whole operation in general was approved. I just pulled up the approval from July fifteenth of two thousand twenty-one. And to answer one of their first questions, one of the conditions of approval was that any future outdoor trash or dumpster location and screening be submitted for zoning review. So it was part of that presentation that there would not be, not be, and their approval, that there would not be any dumpsters. They are going through the, um, but as we said, the building is under construction and going through the permitting process based on the original approval, the building itself and the operation and the fire marshal, as well as the building inspectors have all been out there, I think, a couple of times already. Um, and on a regular basis.
Yeah.
Um, at the time of, at the time of the initial review, the fire marshal had no comment. Um, I think this is the initial one. Not the, I'm just making sure it's not the modification, but I think the modification was in the fall, early fall. If I remember correctly.
Yep.
So the application that's on the agenda this evening is for accessory structures for the approved, already approved plan, and that, that's where the modifications are. Um, one, the silos in the back as well as the structure, the accessory cover for the scale and the, um, kind ball with its accessory and the loss of the two parking spaces there. Those two parking spaces are excess parking spaces, so they still meet the zoning requirements despite the loss of them. Um, the, um, and I, I, I don't mean to, um, if, if, um, Commissioner Joycey had more to say, I just want to give a little bit of a, uh, a kind of an overview of what you know, bring it here as opposed to, um, either having to be a staff accessory building review or not. And, um, it's all those items combined substantially changes the look, um, the initial, um, coming back to change the size of the building from it being additions to the original building, as I said at the very beginning. That did come back for discussion amongst the mission that we can handle that administratively for that to change the structure itself to the new structure on exactly the same footprint as the old building. Um, the aerial view I had up a minute ago, uh, I think it'll be up again, um. Diane, are you seeing the aerial view now?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to point out that this, uh, um, area adjacent to the east and north is the town of Berlin land, that Sportsman's Pond, and we just did, uh, uh, study to evaluate whether it's suitable for any, um, recreational, and if there's any parking, you might remember those that are present, that there was some discussion as to whether this site had the ability to add any public parking in a portion of their site if they didn't use it all. Um, and that was something that was, um, talked about then and just not to consider it. Um, because they were going to be looking into whether they could, you know, by their financing and their insurances and everything else. Some other use, um, where so far that study had just been, um, being worked on at that time and hasn't there's no direction yet, um, because public access is a problem. Have the water tower, and then this is the site where ABC is, and the plan that's gone through wetlands for five fifty-five fifty-four Berlin turbine for those housing units over there. So this is all in the back of the building, facing Sportsman's Pond, although it is substantially wooded. But, oh, still
Yeah.
To bring to your attention that it was a change, that I wasn't comfortable operating to the commission, so.
Yeah, no, thank you. I had, uh, I I had to go back to my agenda to refresh my memory what we were actually doing, so I'm sorry I got off on a tangent a little bit, but if nobody has, um, other questions, I'll make a motion.
Any questions? Okay, we will entertain your motion, Diane.
I'm just going, the question, and internally, that building is an awful lot of space left. I incredibly, that building, is that just for growth or, uh, so as you add equipment in there, say another uh compactor or whatever, and more conveyors or whatever, uh, does that come back to you internally?
It depends on the requirements required. So if they're just, if they're upgrading, changing equipment, just like any other manufacturing company, we wouldn't see it unless a building permit is required for some portion of it. Generally speaking, if that's the case, um, and it is completely internal, um, zoning would not see it, but the building inspector and the fire marshal would.
So the back part of that property, uh, like where the scale is and stuff, uh, that back property line, uh, going towards the pond uh, existing pond, uh, does that have any fence in order or anything to, uh?
No.
No. It's because I, I mean, if there is plans of the town, uh, using that pond or even I'm looking at site from those, uh, condos line, uh, that maybe, you know, uh, fence should be across that property, uh, the line, at least that back property line, the front property line is all industrial. Uh, but then that back property line is a question to me.
Okay.
You know, I mean, uh, solid white fence or something to, to, to block it from the apartments or the condos and, and, and whatever.
Yeah.
In my opinion, a six-foot pile of fence is gonna be nothing high.
Probably not, but
Well, the other, the other
Let's go high D's.
But, you know But we don't know about those apartments. We don't know, you know, so that's, that's like a whole Yeah, I mean, that's a pie in the sky right now. We've seen no plans for that.
No.
And the bottom line is, is that, you know, those are, I, I, we, we just want to address this to see if this amendment, I, I don't want to start putting, um, um, a caveat on an approval or whatever this commission decides to do based on what somebody may or may not do on a completely different part of our, here, parcel property. I, I don't, I don't
Never, okay, I'll case you put, I put it to the commission, it's another bite of the apple. I hate to say that word, but, uh, you know, to see improvements, that would be one, and that's just, just, just
Well, yeah, you know, I, I don't want to hold one business responsible for improvements around the pond that the town owns.
Screening.
You know, well, uh, you know, where are you screening it from? I mean, there were houses existing there, I guess, that, that, you know, and like I said, it, you know, I, I, I don't know what's gonna go, if anything's gonna go on that other parcel. I don't want to commingel my projects. I mean, I hard, don't try to focus on what's before the commission. But anyway, that's, that's my thought. I mean, you make a good point, but I, I just want to keep it in the reality of what we're doing.
The potential use of property, not anything proposed to us.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, so, uh, Diane, did you want to go in with the motion?
Sure, um, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan, uh, or the accessory structures, um, for Smartfeed at seventy-six Fuller Way.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Joycey. Do we have a second? So is I who, Steve Briella? Okay. And further discussion. And all those in favor? I.
I.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so who?
Thank you.
Congratulations, okay. Alright, and next up is the discussion regarding the proposed amendment content for extension of the moratorium related to cannabis uses. This public hearing is scheduled for August fourth. Um, so with this item, Maureen, um, waiting to catch up.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, just take this. I'm here.
I was, you know what I was thinking when you said that? Um
It's an improvement.
Yeah, well, I, I think it's a talk about It's, uh, has its USP.
Oops.
Oh, he's
Yeah. Okay.
So, okay, so the USP, I have to get that out. I'd like to open up bio with the, so
we have this discussion regarding the proposed amendment content?
Yes.
For extension of the moratorium related to cannabis. So this is coming up on August fourth.
So
For public
You might remember, I, you should, at the last public hearing where we discussed, um, adding the cannabis uses to the, um, for an extension, the public hearing, you know, we, there was some discussion as to how, whether the wording would be suggestive of where that discussion was leaning in conversations with corporation council, so to, to, whether it should be reflective of the possibility, um, um, of prohibiting retail uses and whether the public hearing notice should be reflective of you know, some of the way you were, the, the way the discussion was, was starting. In the meantime, since discussing with corporation council, um, we determined that the public hearing should be able to take its course. And that simply noticing as an extension of the public hearing, keep it simple, so that it's the discussion can take its course during that meeting, so, um, is better. So it's almost not necessary to have it on here, because we'll be noticing it as an extension of the public hearing, or an extension of the vote.
I don't know if you can hear me, but I can see and hear you guys.